Oh, wait. Sorry, that was a little excessive. Good evening and welcome to the September 7, 2022 Meeting of the City Summit Zoning Board of Adjustment. My name is Stephen Spurr and I am Chairman of the Summit Zoning Board. In accordance with New Jersey Statute 10:4-10, adequate notice this meeting has been provided to a newspaper of record and has been posted here in City Hall. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the Board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For the benefit of the interested public, this meeting is being livestreamed to the city's YouTube page and also broadcast to Summit's government channel, which is Comcast Channel 34 and Verizon Channel 30. Please note that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room where you entered. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system here at the dais and return it after the meeting. This evening, the esteemed Dennis Galvin will be representing the Board as our zoning Board Attorney. He will advise the Board members on matters of law and is the key interface with the applicant's attorney. Mr. Galvin thankfully does not vote on the applications. Mr. Nicola, Chris Nicola, is a city employee and is the zoning board secretary. Ms. Nicola assists applicants with the preparation of our applications, planning our agendas, and keeping our meeting minutes. Ms. Nicola also does not vote on the applications. Our Board consists of seven regular members and up to four alternates. All members can participate in the hearings tonight, but a maximum of seven can vote. Most applications require a simple majority to be approved. Some applications require five affirmative votes to be approved. You'll be told which majority will be required before we begin our deliberations. Ms. Nicola, will you please call the role of members?
Certainly. Chairman Spurr?
Here.
Vice Chairman Steiner?
Here.
Mr. Yuko is excused. Ms. Noell?
Here.
Mr. Marlin is excused. Mr. Malley?
Here.
Mr. Loykets?
Here.
Ms. Toth?
Here.
Ms. Sager is excused. Dr. Levine?
Here.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
All right, you have a quorum, you can proceed.
We generally hear the applications in the order they are listed on the agenda. We try to have each hearing last no more than 30 minutes, but we do understand that some applications are too complex to be heard within that timeframe. Each hearing begins with the applicant or their attorney giving an overview of the application and the variances that are required. We then hear from any expert witnesses the applicant may have to help explain the application and why the variances are needed. The Board members may ask questions of the applicant, their attorney, and the expert witnesses. Once the Board professionals and Board members have completed their questioning, the public will have an opportunity to ask questions. This is not the time to tell us what you think about this application. That opportunity comes at the end of the hearing. Before you ask your questions, please clearly state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address. It is important that our court reporter be able to keep a clear and accurate public record. The court reporting is being done over the microphones and video, so ask that you speak clearly into the microphones. After all witnesses have been heard, members of the interested public have their second opportunity to speak, and at that time you may express your opinion, positive or negative, about the application. Then the public hearing is closed and we enter into executive session where the Board members discuss the application and vote. You will be able to hear, or rather listen to, our executive session, but you will not normally be able to participate in our discussion. Most applications are heard and decided in the same evening. If an application requires additional information or testimony that cannot be presented tonight, we will carry your application to another date and it will not be decided during this meeting. Krista Anderson, the city zoning officer, has asked that I remind all applications that they must read carefully the resolution that documents the zoning board's decision and to pay particular attention to the conditions contained in the resolution. For example, if a landscaping plan is required, you must obtain one and submit it to John Linsen, the city's forester. If a grading plan is required, you must have one prepared by a civil engineer and submit three copies along with the application fee to the city's engineering division. Failure to satisfy all conditions in a resolution will result in a delay in approving your application, as it will necessitate additional follow-up from zoning and other city staff. The resolutions documenting the board's decision will normally be available one month after we decide the application. Before we call the names of the agenda, if you'd please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, first is 29 Plymouth Road.
Michael and Nancy Paulson, is someone here to represent them? If so, would they come up to the podium? If not, we understand that they have requested to be carried, and we will be carrying this until, I believe, November the 7.
Correct, Ms. Vice Chairman.
And it's to be made clear to the applicant, I guess, whatever format, that this is the final extension on this, and this will be...
Based on their not being here at all, I think the Board would like a motion and a second. I think we should carry, I recommend that we carry their notice until November 7, but I think we should send them a letter saying that we intend to proceed on this matter on November 7, and if they fail to show, then we will, then we're going to make a ruling, and then we can take zoning enforcement action.
Okay, we're going to dispose of this case no matter what on November 7.
Correct.
Okay, I would look for a motion from someone on...
Yes, sir.
This letter from Krista was also sent to Mr. Rosen, who...
Okay, there's a letter that...
We need to send a letter, yes.
We're going to send one.
It's important that it's fair, but I'm saying we need to send a letter from the Board, Krista, that...
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, please make sure at least a copy of this with a cover indicating the Board's action goes to the applicant as well as Mr. Rosen.
I usually say the letter would be a try or dismiss, but I think this is going to be a try or deny. Okay?
Well, okay. So I would look for a motion to that effect.
Motion to carry.
Second.
Give it just a second.
Ken, let's do this by roll call.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I got the second query. I had Scott.
Scott.
Scott, all right, we'll give it to Scott. All right, and for the roll call, we'll have Vice Chairman Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Noell?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Loykets?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
Dr. Levine?
Yes.
And Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
And back to Archer.
Thank you, well done. We're going to jump one item ahead to 31 Woodland Avenue, Calvary Episcopal Church, which I believe you're here representing the applicant?
Yes.
Just give us a quick synopsis of, I believe, your request to carry this to a later date?
Yes, Hillary Alls from Dempsey-Dempsey &amp; Sheehan, representing the applicant, the rector, wardens, vestment of Calvary Church in Summit, New Jersey. After our view of the administrative comments, it was determined that it's necessary to present a planning testimony in support of the application. The applicants have retained a planner, and he will be here at the next hearing. Also, in order to be fully responsive to the questions raised, the applicants require additional time to collect the information requested. So I would ask that the matter be carried to the next available date, and if that could be fixed, then I would also ask that the applicants not be required to renotice.
I believe the date we're targeting is November 21st.
Correct.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Well, we're...
We're just going to do, we'll do similarly a vote, we'll ask for a motion in a second, and we'll hold a vote.
To carry without further notice.
Carry without further notice. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
All right.
And then we'll note that Ms. Toth is likely going to recuse from this case, so she'd be excluded from the vote.
All right.
Well, then maybe I shouldn't make that motion either. I may very well also have to, I'm not 100% sure if I will or not.
So out of an abundance of caution, do we have a motion excluding Mr. Steiner to carry without notice?
Sure, if you have a motion to carry without notice.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you.
All right, strike again, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And mark down...
Two abstentions.
Not voting, put them down as not voting, don't use abstentions.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Noell.
Thank you.
So you go ahead with your kids.
Yeah, thank you.
Back to our regularly scheduled program. First is to Woodmere Drive, Thomas &amp; Gretchen Oatman, if you're here. We just might come to the podium real quick?
Sure.
Excellent. Do you have an attorney or any professionals with you this evening?
I do, I have Kim Tone here, who is assisting me with the application, please. And good evening, and thank you for...
Yeah, we're going to call the whole list, so just grab a quick seat, we're just making sure that everyone's here.
You're going first.
But you're going to go...
Four ducks now.
That's right. Thank you very much. The next application we'll hear is 183 Ashland Road, Scott March. Scott, yep.
Just can holler out from there.
We want to use the mics, no?
Oh, is that...
Yeah, 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 come on. Don't listen to her. It's better that you don't listen to her.
Now he just sounds like my wife.
Scott March, Scott, M-A-R-C-H, just like the month. I live at 183 Ashland Road in Summit.
An attorney or any professionals with you this evening?
I am a financial advisor, or actually I shouldn't say that, I work for Morgan Stanley as a risk officer.
There's no engineers, architects?
The whole rest of the family, engineers, yeah.
Well, anyone here that'll testify?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
I'm the project manager, P+82 Studio, we're the architects, representing Mr. March.
Are you a licensed architect?
No, the licensed architect, Steve Laxers, is with COVID, so sadly I have to represent him today.
No, 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 no.
Well, she won't be able to write testimony as a licensed architect.
Might have to carry this case, we'll see. We'll start, we'll see if we can get it done without the expert.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Things happen, you know, that's, we've got to do, we've got to follow the law. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Now, the third application we'll hear this evening is 69 Pine Grove Avenue, Peter and Jill Raskin. Just one of you can come up if you like, just to confirm. Hello?
Hi, good evening.
You are, are you Jill?
Jill, Jill Raskin, yep.
Do you have any professionals with you this evening?
Yes, the fabulous Toby Lazar.
Toby Lazar, okay, all right.
Don't say that to my daughter.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
So just serve you over here.
Architect.
Architect, okay. Excellent, we'll be hearing you third, so hang in here, take copious notes, but we'll try to get to you as quickly as we can.
Great, okay. Thank you.
Excellent, all right, back up to the top of the order, to Woodmere Drive, Thomas &amp; Gretchen Oatman. Yep.
Okay. Why don't you both stand up for a second? Raise your right hand. Do you swear a firm testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? State your full name for the record, it's by your last name.
Tom Oatman.
Just say it loudly, give them...
Tom Oatman, O-A-T-M-A-N.
Thank you. Kim?
Kim Tone, T-O-N-E.
All right, Mr. Oatman, if you'd tell us a little bit about the application, and then we'll let your professional do all the heavy lifting.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Tone's previously appeared for the Board.
Yes, we'll accept her credentials, that's right.
Sure, so we've been residents in Summit for over 20 years, and in 2010, we bought our home on Woodmere, and as you may know, the home was constructed in 1940, and other than a kitchen remodel that we think was done in the 90s and a garage that was added on, at some point, we think the home is largely original. So we knew that at some point we had a project in front of us, and so the proposal or the application that you have before you addresses a number of things. One, we had some pre-existing structural and functional issues associated with the garage. We wanted to update the functionality of the home, and then, given the home is over 80 years old, there are just some things that are prudent to do to it at this point in its life to, you know, maintain it properly. So we think we have an application that addresses those objectives and substantially improves the curb appeal of the home. I have Kim here that I've worked with in terms of the design, and I'd be happy to turn it over to her to explain our application further, and of course, I'm available to answer any of your questions, so thank you.
Okay, Kim, maybe before we pivot to you, will you be able to speak to the driveway questions and the pavement?
Mm-hmm.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, all right, then before we do jump to you, are there any questions from the Board for the applicant? Or professionals, or engineers, anything for the applicant at this time?
No, not at this time.
Okay, and are there any members of the interested public here this evening for this application that have a question? I'll continue to ask for questions, and at the end of the application, you'll have the opportunity to offer your opinion, positive or negative. Okay, excellent, well done. On to Kim, all right.
So we're here for the original, we're here for two variances, but Krista identified a code in the parking, or the driveway next to the house, which is an existing portion of the driveway that we'd like to keep. The other two variances are for side yard setback, the existing garage, which is like one of these are, for the most part, the drawings that you have in front of you. If there's anything changed, we'll monitor that if we need it. This is the, Woodmere comes across here, Summit Avenue's over here, second house in. This is the sheet A1 or sheet B1 for what you have. The garage area is essentially the hatched area over here. It's 15.12 feet from the side yard property line currently. It's a one-story structure with a parapet wall and a flat roof inside of that. It has some structural issues in, it has some cracks in the walls. Tom has to sit out there every time it snows and shovel it off so that the roof doesn't collapse. The foundation has shown some wear and tear from water because the driveway is currently pitching in towards the foundation, so we need to rebuild the garage. It's currently a concrete block wall system, which we will probably take the walls down and replace, but we'd like to place the garage in the same location. We don't know about the foundation yet. There is some evidence of some deterioration along the back corner here, and a little bit of the front, it looks like, from what we can see in the gaps in the driveway and the wall of the house, it seems that it's cinder block that might have been eroded from the water that's actually dumping off the side of the roof here, down through some levers, and essentially just collecting and having nowhere to go. So the new modifications that we'll do, we'll put in some drainage around it, pitch this driveway into maybe a swale that brings the water back to the back of the property if required, but essentially, we're going to build the structure back in its current condition and in its new condition, in its current location. The current garage base is the street, so we do actually need, Krista had originally said that if we, if it was conforming to the side, she wouldn't request a variance, she wouldn't make us request a variance for a side, for the garage doors facing the street, but we might still ask for it here. We are replacing the garage door that is facing the street with slightly larger door. The existing door is 15 foot six wide by six foot six high, this is a 15 foot wide by eight foot high garage door that we're putting over here. And so the side yard setback, as I said, is 15.9. The other variance was the parking area at the side of the property. The driveway currently goes back around to the back of the garage. It's really narrow here, I'm not really sure anybody can really drive there, but removing this area triggers this as no longer a driveway, go parking spot. Currently, there's a tree, there's a tree in the front yard, not so I should want the pictures as hang on, I guess.
And just before you proceed, when were these taken?
These were taken by me on September 2nd.
Did they fairly represent the property in the condition they are today?
Yes.
Okay, I guess A1, right, Chris?
Correct.
Okay. So this is a view from Woodmere, looking at the garage. You can see that the house has sort of a pinwheel kind of effect. The garage is one-story piece here, this is, this car is parked in the side parking area right now, and then the, this is one of the wings out to the house, comes right here this way. This is a view from the others, around the corner. This is looking over towards the pond. This patio right here, that's in front of the house, is about 330 square feet, and it is currently more than a foot above grade, so it counts in building coverage. So we're asking for a variance for building coverage. We're reducing the building coverage by taking out two other patios we are putting in in addition. We have a net decrease of about 125 square feet of building coverage, but we didn't get all the way there. If this patio wasn't there, we would conform. So it's really not a bulk building coverage variance, it's more about the patio in the front. And this overlooking the pond is a really sort of pretty grand view on a very interestingly laid-out house. This is the back of the house, looking at the back of the garage. Garage from the front corner, just a couple other pictures to show that you can see and get perspective. This tree here, we really want to keep, so it actually presents a little bit of an issue in navigating the garage because the garage backs out and you turn this way, that's when the parking space is a little bit helpful, to be able to back out of the driveway and not take up space or pave more around the tree. We really want to protect that. And then this is just another view taken from the actual corner of the street, looking back at the house, that you get a little bit more of an idea of what the house looks So the addition is basically for, on the first floor, is to replace the garage and to enlarge the current kitchen at a breakfast area, modern with a covered entry. This is currently the family room. The, we looked at, in designing this, we looked at pulling the garage in. There's a couple reasons we actually decided to come here and ask for the variances, that one of the reasons is that there isn't a lot of space between the family room and the garage as it is. We can't really pull this garage door over too far anyway because of, as I mentioned before, the tree and pulling into the driveway. So it makes more sense to just keep the garage in the current location, these are properties being used right now. The addition for the kitchen and breakfast room is very modest, none of the spaces are really, really large, and so we've tried to keep it tight because we're respecting the fact that we have a building coverage variance. But this is the patio that I mentioned before, you can see the size of this is bigger than what we're adding here, and this is the patio that is toward, facing the pond, that is counting towards building coverage.
Did you read Krista's memo? Krista's memo?
Yes.
And she talks about, at the bottom of her memo, she talks about the parking area to the left?
This, this area over here.
Yeah, could you address that?
Yeah, this is in the site plan.
That's one of the...
The, the parking area is here, so the area of the driveway that we were taking out at the, at the back, because we're taking that out, it means that this is a driveway to nowhere, so it really becomes a parking space. We really feel that it's necessary, as you back out of the driveway here, to leave space for a car to park here. I mean, we all have more than a few cars on the property, they have two sets of twins, so, and I think they're all driving now, right?
They're all driving.
So navigating out to the back here is, you're backing out here with the, with the big tree here. We want to keep the tree. This is really functional for, for the configuration of the existing driveway, so we'd like to request the variance be included for that.
Board will consider that?
And then the only other thing that we're doing on the first floor is there's a raised patio at the back currently that we're taking down and putting in an angry patio, which is also reducing the building coverage.
I think you might want to ask the Board if they have questions at this point.
Do you have any questions?
So I'm trying to be helpful to everybody.
Want to make sure that...
You're doing a great job.
Make sure our board engineers have an opportunity to chime in as well, though. So, Mr. Fenn, if anything, the glass?
Yeah, I do, I do. Could you talk more about, about the swale that you're talking about putting in to protect the foundation? Could you address that?
Let's see what... There's, I think that there's very little pitch on this side of the property, so we're going to have to, I mean, I don't even know if it would show up on contours, but we'll work with Murphy &amp; Hollis to put something in there that actually takes the water away from that side of the property, because it can't go back to the house and we can't go on neighboring property, so it has to go towards the backyard.
So we need a condition that they'll consult with our engineer to ensure that the swale is proper?
Adequately pitched, right, to avoid neighboring properties and, of course, to protect your foundation as well.
Okay.
There's also in the engineering comments, there was something about, question about the manhole that's located on the property, that's...
Well, a condition of approval is going to be you'll have to respond to the engineering.
Okay.
And since you have Mr. Hollis to do that, you don't have to struggle with that, that's beyond your scope of your...
It's an exterior, it's on top, is what it is, so...
We would ask, just to clarify, we would ask that the condition of the application that you agree to what's stipulated within... that you agree to what's stipulated within. Would you like to call out, Ms. Raffa?
Was it, can you mention anything about the fence that's along neighboring lot 17? I don't know, I, just clarify if that's on the applicant's property or if it's, yes?
The fence on lot 17 is on the neighbor's property.
Okay, it's not, it's not on the applicant's?
Yeah.
I think that was it.
Thank you. Back then to the board, any questions as Hollow, if you'd like to ask the architect?
I'll take.
Yeah, Mr. Stone?
The, one of the groups talked about the composition of the roof.
Over copper?
Yeah.
They requested that the roof over the one-story piece be copper? I don't, I mean, that's probably what I would have suggested. I don't think there is, I meant over the breakfast desk, we were planning on copper.
Oh, yeah, we were planning on copper for that roof, yes, yes, sir.
Okay. The answer is that one. That's acceptable to you?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes is always acceptable.
So we need a condition for that, that we're going to put copper over the breakfast?
Architect has stipulated in testimony that they plan to include a copper roof over the breakfast room. Any other questions from members of the board? No? Any questions from members of the public for the architect? All right, I believe you're the last professional for today.
Yeah.
Mr. Oven, anything you'd like to say in conclusion for the application?
Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Wonderful. And given that there are no members of the interested public here, we would also open it for comments. But we've foregone that opportunity, so who goes to you? Mr. Galvin, would you just remind us of the conditions before the board begins deliberations?
I've had, I have three, the applicants to install an adequately pitched swale, to be confirmed by the board's engineer. Two, compliance with the board engineer's letter. And three, that there will be a copper roof installed over the breakfast area. Outside, not inside.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. We'd like to begin deliberations.
I'm happy to begin.
Thank you.
Sure. So you need variances for building coverage, side yard setback, the parking space on the left, and then it sounds like front-facing garage doors, I believe. So in my mind, these requests are easy to support. I'll just cut to the chase there, my conclusion. Building coverage, you're reducing it. You're making it more, you know, right now it's not in compliance and you're making it more in compliance by removing the two raised terraces. And in the process, you're also reducing impervious coverage, the law coverage by, what is it, 566 square feet? So you're so dramatically under for that. Also, the new covered entry in the front, I think is a safety. You know, anytime someone is making their home safer, that's something that I look at as a big positive for you and for the neighborhood and the town as well as a whole, so that's a positive. Regarding the decrease in law coverage, in my mind, that justifies the parking space on the left because having that parking space isn't, it's not putting you over law coverage at all. There's, you're removing so much of it that having it there for convenience for having six drivers in your home, I mean, that, in my mind, that is a small price to pay and I completely can support that parking spot. Regarding the front-facing garage doors, it's pre-existing, it's what you have now. There's a water issue of water leaking in the foundation, you're not sure the status of. You want to rebuild it and you're rebuilding the same thing, completely in support of that. Also, the side yard setback, that's just really a continuation of the garage, which is, you know, a pre-existing setback, non-conformity. I'm happy to support that. I very much support this application. Just on a personal note, I think that your street is such a charming, really beautiful street, like that secret little pond there that no one knows about and such a beautiful house. So it's just great to hear that you're making these wonderful improvements.
Thanks very much.
Yep.
Anyone care to add to Dr. Levine's comments?
I'll just add particularly as to the parking space. I'm thrilled that you want to keep that tree in the front yard and the parking, keeping that part of the driveway as is for a parking space and easier maneuvering in and out is a very small price to pay to maintain an historic tree like that. And just aesthetically, it's a really interesting house. The garage kind of looks stuck on. And adding the second story above it, I think is going to make the whole dwelling look much more cohesive. So certainly I can support this as well.
Barring any further comments to.
Oh, go ahead. I just want to be clear that we are adding the variance that Krista talks about for the parking space and that is a separate variance and not being included so that we clear up the issue that she was concerned about.
Yes, we will add that as a variance.
So it'll be, okay.
It's not a condition to variance.
It's a, I did get it because I wanted to make sure we got all the variances in because, you know, they're reducing everything and then need more variances. It's a difficult, difficult concept at times. I think this is supportable because, and I think one of the things we should look at also is the work on drainage, taking care of the neighbors, taking care of their, you know, yeah, their own garage, we understand, but taking care of the neighbors and, yeah, I didn't. I discovered a pond on the way around. It was a lovely place to look at and probably a nice place to live. And so I think that all the things that they put together here make sense and I can support this application.
Excellent. I too can support the application for the reasons that have been shared and find it peculiar but interesting nonetheless that we're, want parking preserved, to preserve a tree. It's an odd trade, but I like it. So for all those reasons, certainly drainage, improvements to safety, decrease in building coverage, this is the application I could support. So with that, we have an application to approve with conditions as noted.
Moved.
A second?
Second.
Goes the roll call, Chris?
Certainly. Mr. Chairman Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Newell?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Oiketz?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
Dr. Levine?
Yes.
And Chairman Spur?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Good luck with your project.
We're on a Dennis Galvin pace this evening, everyone buckle in. You missed this, right?
You'll have to leave A1.
Next, we will hear 183 Ashland Road.
Chris, make sure she leaves A1. Thank you.
For Scott March. Mr. Marchip, you'll come forward. And then before you get too deep into this, we're just going to want to investigate how we want to proceed with the Ashland.
Well, my concern is that if you're not a licensed architect, you can't testify, but she's familiar with the plans, why don't we allow the applicant to try to proceed to see if, you know, know that the work's done, he's got to try to.
Willina will.
Present it and if there's a question he can't answer, he can ask her and then he can repeat it on the record.
Okay. You understand the dance?
I like that, Eric.
All right, then grab a seat, we're going to swear you in and then.
And I'll put you both under oath, but I'm not putting you under oath as an expert.
Correct.
All right, raise your hands. You swear a firm testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, the message about the truth. So go first, give us your full name for the records, call us for last name.
Scott March, last name is M A R C H.
Okay, Scott, you have to be a little bit louder, okay? Go ahead.
It's Paulina Mansilla, it's M A N C I L L A. I'm the project manager for the company of People's Action Studio.
What's the architect's name again?
Steve Lazarus.
All right, Steve Lazarus, okay.
Okay, put your hand down, grab a seat. So, Mr. March, we're going to principally hear from you this evening. So start us off with just a general introduction to what you hope to accomplish and then we'll dig a little bit deeper.
Okay. I've lived in Summit for 22 years now. My kids were born and raised here, have a 21, 19, and 14-year-old. My roof was starting to leak on the second floor. And given the opportunity, I have, you know, all the conditions that we've been under as far as COVID, it's an opportunity for me to expand without changing the footprint of my house by adding a bathroom on the second floor to create an en suite and then also an office on the second floor. It's not changing the square footage, I think, by a high degree, but, and it's not changing, I don't think, anything as far as the setbacks are, that are already in place.
So our records show variances requested for right side yard setback, total side yard percentage, and FAR.
Are those existing conditions that aren't changing?
They're not changing. The setbacks are not changing. The FAR is changing.
Yes.
As a nature of additional square footage.
Yes, slightly.
Slightly.
Because you're adding the bathroom?
I'm adding three dormers. So right now, there's a dormer in the middle on the second floor and I'm expanding on the three sides.
Right. And each one of those, that creates spaces above seven feet in height, is that correct?
Yes.
And what's the square feet of each of those dormers?
The second floor existing, 819 square feet. The second floor that we're proposing would be 1,035 square feet.
And that's the difference, is three dormers make the difference?
So the difference is basically the addition you technically doing is 216 square feet. Because basically what happens is, sorry, we have an existing dormer. The only thing we're doing is extending the walls up, so we're keeping the same envelope. But in the front, on the right side, that portion is an addition because there's no dormer, there's a slot. So that portion is on the left side, in the front and back, we're only lifting the roof to get more headroom space.
So board's got to decide if they'll look at the building, you know, and accommodate deviation from the increase in floor area ratio. So the trade-off is having a little bit more living space and if you can't, if you don't recognize any adverse impact on the streetscape, it may be in this request. Here's a question in Krista's memo about adding, what do you call it, a generator? You know, you're going to put that in a location.
I think, well, I think it was an air conditioning unit.
Okay.
But I don't think that was.
Even still, you're going to, if you're going to put in a unit, if you're going to put it in a compliant location.
I think it's already existing and I don't think that we would change that out. Right now, I think the air conditioning.
Krista was asking if it was in a conforming location. So we're going to have to verify that that's.
Okay.
That's usually nowadays in our engineer's letter, so compliance with that usually handles that.
You do have that in there, yeah.
Air conditioner and generators.
I think that's in conjunction with Krista's reviews, just to kind of like.
Right, but it's, we don't need a separate.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Intensity because we already.
If you don't know, if that's a conforming location, it's supposed to be 10 feet off of something, something. AC or generator? What's that? AC or generator? What does Krista's letter say?
It seems like.
There's no generator, there's only AC. No, no.
I'm not a regular.
Required side yard.
That's why we're trying to help you, Dennis.
Required side yard setback for AC unit in the R6 zone is five feet. Required side yard setback for a generator in R6 is 10 feet.
So you're saying we're not doing a generator on.
No generator, just AC.
The AC, but wherever it's supposed to be.
So technically, if he has to put an AC condenser, we will put it on the left side, back in the rear, right here in this corner.
In a conforming, in a conforming location?
Yeah, Collier 9 covers this.
Excellent.
All right.
Collier 9 is, the applicant has not noted the location of the existing AC units and generator and shall note if additional AC units are proposed at this time, all mechanical equipment shall comply with the ordinance for setbacks and screening.
But we've confirmed that there's no request for a non-conforming AC or generator location. Excellent, thank you for that clarification. Anything further you'd like to clear, sorry, you just want to, you want to point out regarding the board's decision to be made here?
No, I was going to ask with the engineer and anything else.
You'd like to draw out of the engineer's letter?
There was one note, was that on sheet VA0? The building subcode data, it's like kind of right in the center of the sheet. Total land area disturbed is 768.4 square feet. Where did that number come from? Does he have, we're telling him it's right?
No, it's actually not the wrong one, he didn't get the latest updated version, it's zero.
Okay, good.
The building's not expanding.
Yeah, exactly.
No, no, I apologize, that was the, an error.
Okay, great.
It was updated zero. It's over to.
Anything further, Ms. Raffa, you'd like to draw attention to? So, Mr. March, would you accept the condition to the application that the board's engineer's letter would be added and you would comply with what's under in there? Excellent, thank you. Any questions from the board for the applicant?
Have we, oh, go ahead. You've started.
She's hiring the pecking order here, right, anyway, so good.
Not quite.
Pulling right out of here tonight.
Not quite.
Okay. I was confused about the description of what's happening on the second floor, the elevations on VA2, the proposed front elevation. The version that we have at least, upper-left corner says that on either side of the front facade, you're going to have a dormer. And the testimony was that on the left, it's not a dormer, it's just raising the roof, so.
So it is an existing, I'm sorry, I don't.
Okay, I mean, there isn't a dormer on the left side right now, there's just in the middle.
Talking about the back.
So if you see this front facade on the right side, that's existing roof. So if you look at the pictures, you didn't receive the first?
Oh, and I drove by, of course, yes.
So you have that roof, so that is a new dorm, okay? This side above the garage, this side is existing, we're just lifting the walls and the roof.
I'm feeling weird. All right.
So you see that roof is slapping, but technically inside there are bedrooms, but it has a five-foot wall height, so that's why you see a roof. But that could be broken down and then we're going to extend that wall.
So they're making both sides to meet the same level as the dormer in the middle.
Okay, so we're raising the roof on the left to match the roof on the right, but we're also putting a, are we putting a dormer across the front so that?
They're matching the middle piece.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay. Okay, that's where I was confused. I thought you were saying you were matching the middle piece on the right and doing something else on the left.
No, no, no.
Okay, okay.
One whole set.
Yeah, it'll go across.
That, that's what I thought you were asking at first, I got confused in the verbiage.
All right, we're clear now, Dr. Levine?
Thank you.
Great. The numbers that Krista used to calculate the FAR, the proposed FAR, were approximate. She stated because she didn't have a first-floor floor plan. Have we confirmed that the FAR requested is in fact 35.8% and not more and not less?
Correct, so it is, so the FAR existing is 33.45. The proposed is 37 and the allowed is 35%.
Okay, so it's more than, it's more than she had calculated?
We're over 2%.
Okay.
And the first floor, we based it off of the survey, the brand-new survey that Mr. March did. So that's.
Okay.
So sorry, just to pause there for a moment. Is the requested variance for FAR 37, 38? What is the requested?
Okay, so the proposed is 37% that we're proposing, but allowed is 35%, so we're over 2%.
Sweet, so that's different than what's in the application?
Krista's memo.
Yeah.
Okay, is Krista, to your knowledge, Mr. March, been, has this been, this point of distinction been raised there? Is she aware it's a minor deviation, but to your knowledge, she hasn't been, just as in the memo, 35.8 as opposed to 37.8 in the table?
Requested dimensioned round floor plan to be added, so we.
Well, you, listen, you have a.
By a licensed professional?
Let me just say, you got a full range of what you can do. I'm trying to help with COVID and try to pull them through, but if you have doubts, you hold. You know, you can get the first floor plan, we could have Krista confirm the actual. I mean, you know, when you're at 0.8, our notes say 0.85. So that's really not much of a deviation, so I'm trying to push for it. Now all of a sudden, 37, that makes, that's a bigger, that's a bigger percentage. And the question is, I mean, even at that, do you, the question I always have is, and you don't have like a colored rendering here that would have helped, you know, do you like? Do you like the look of it? If you like the look of it and you don't feel it's going to be adversely impacting the streetscape, then I think then you can accommodate the deviation. The standard is, can you accommodate the deviation from the floor area ratio standard? Floor area ratio is a bulk standard, so we're concerned about the massing and the effect on surrounding properties. Here, where they're asking you to just add a couple dormers, that seems pretty reasonable to me, because once you pop the dormers in, that enhances the, normally enhances the look of the property, and it does create little pockets of additional square footage, and when you add them together, all of a sudden, you got a percentage. So normally, that would be justified, but I'm not, I didn't see the drawing. I don't know at this point if you guys should be okay with it or not. So if you feel you need more information, we'll hold them to a night and we'll get more information, or we can.
Can we do it as a condition of approval? Just that they submit a dimensioned floor plan with, to confirm what their testimony is, and if it's not confirmed, they might have to come back?
Okay, great. Is that an acceptable condition? Mr. March? It's an acceptable condition?
Yes.
What do you think?
Well, I just want to confirm what the, that we're all looking at the same plan. Could you tell me what the revision date is on the plan that you have there?
It's revision number two dated 8/25.
I don't have that one. I have 8/23, or I have notes, Krista's notes are 8/23, I have, no, it's May 5th, is my.
Sadly, the update was on last minute orders, possibly needing that to be measured.
So this sounds to me like it's.
Oh, 7/13, yes, 7/13.
7/13.
If you guys don't have that, I just wanted to make sure.
7/13.
7/13.
That's what I have, which is why, I was thinking you guys, you were talking, that that total land area disturbance on your plan is zero, and then I'm thinking, wait, what do you guys have?
Here's, I'm going to be the tag guy. We gotta wait. We gotta wait, we didn't have the plans. How does a judgment call if it doesn't see the facts? Not us. I mean, one of the problems I have, I have a leaky roof right now. And I mean, at this point, I really do need to get this done. I mean.
I know, but.
But if the problem is the first floor.
The problem is, we don't have a licensed architect in front of us, we don't have the most recent plans. That's unfortunately the problem. And there's deviation between what's in the plans and what's in the memos and what was reviewed by the zoning officer.
That we were looking at the variance setup, the last variance I got, wasn't she able to verify that using that variance?
We can't make this decision with incomplete, to Mr. Galvin's point, facts, unfortunately.
That's why I said I'm being better. It's ready to move. Listen, just everybody come back. What do you got?
19th is the next day.
The 19th, two weeks, what, plus two weeks? 12 days. That's two weeks of a leaky roof. But you're not going to be able to do anything for 30 days, even if we said yes. But you're still putting it back. Because you gotta wait for the resolution. So maybe if I'm a nice guy and I get your resolution done, two weeks after that, you didn't lose anything. And it's not our fault that your expert wasn't available tonight. Boy, the plans aren't here yet, okay? So I recommend that we carry this to the.
I just want to make sure there's an understanding as to what we're expecting to see. And Chris, Nicole has a great point of contact to help ensure that the board has everything they need.
You guys need to get into Krista and clarify the exact floor area ratio that you're requesting.
She's on vacation for two weeks.
Oh, great.
So the four plans, there were about four or five sets that were submitted to help Krista finalize the review, have that later revision, correct?
Yes.
So that's why that's not in front of the board.
Can the engineer make the calculation? Can you?
Paperwork? It's typically not something that we do, and I'm not saying it can't be done. I just know that that's always something that the zoning officer does, so I can't imagine why we.
You could do it, but then it's going to come out of your esprit if the engineers hold things.
I'd probably do that.
And that you're, you're asking for that for speed purposes. And if you guys are okay with it, Krista will have to make the connection, you don't have to deal directly with Krista, she'll get the elbow which you use. Is that okay?
Yes.
If it's cool?
All right, makes sense. So the 19th?
Yeah, that's the next available.
And I won't be here, so.
Better or worse? All right, so we want a motion to carry without further notice to this is September 19th. Second?
Second.
Voice vote all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing now.
Thank you very much.
Save your paperwork, guys.
All right, third up. Let's have Peter and Jill Raskin, 69 Pine Grove Avenue, come forward. Yeah, no, yeah, no, no, no. Yeah, the numbers. No, that was right thing to do. All right, we'll start with swearing anyone who's, will be testifying this evening. That's okay. Mr. Galvin?
Raise your right hand. Did you swear affirm the testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your, at first state your full name for the record, and supply your last name.
Jill Raskin, R-A-S-K-I-N. I'm Hildy Lazar, I'm the Raskins' architect, and I have not been in front of this board, so I can give you my credentials.
Let me ask you a couple quick questions.
Sure.
Why don't you present us with three boards you presented before we sign?
I present in front of Westfield all the time. I've been to Chatham Township.
I know, Westfield's an important place, but it only counts if you want.
Westfield, okay. Westfield, Chatham Township recently, and before that, Fanwood.
Okay.
Okay.
And your license is current?
My license is current, yes.
Your license in the state of New Jersey?
I'm licensed in the state of New Jersey.
Excellent, and we're happy to accept your credentials and welcome you to summit.
Thank you.
So Ms. Raskin, if you just.
Make sure you tell Frank who also I said hi.
I will, absolutely, tomorrow.
Excellent. So Ms. Raskin, just give us a quick introduction to the application, what you hear, and then I will welcome your architect to elaborate.
I'd love to. Okay, so we live at 69 Pine Grove Avenue with my husband and our two children, and we've been there for about eight years. Love our neighborhood and our home. We've been very involved in Franklin School and just the neighborhood in general, and hope to stay in that location, and that's home, for a long time. We've been very happy and very fortunate, but our, at home feels like it's getting a little tight, mostly because we can't park cars in our garage, and it becomes an issue with mudroom space and just shuffling bigger children around. So we are requesting a variance to be able to push our garage a little bit forward into our driveway to allow to park cars basically in the driveway and get them out of the driveway during snow, and just sort of have that access into our home and make it a place that we are going to stay in for a very long time.
Excellent. Any questions from the board for the applicant? Any questions from our professionals? No? Any questions from members of the public for the applicant? Okay. Oh, do you want to, this is just questions for the applicant?
What questions?
Just questions for the applicant? You have a statement to make, or?
Well, it's a question, I have a question about drainage.
Well, you, you're way out ahead on your skis.
Yeah, let's wait to hear from maybe the architect, but a tip off for you that maybe you want to talk a little bit about drainage then. All right, then we'll transition over to the architect when you're ready.
Thank you, I'm ready. So as Mrs. Raskin said, the gist of the project is to enlarge their garage so that they can actually fit cars in the garage. The garage is undersized, it's currently front facing. The lot does have 15,000 square feet, they are in the R15 zone, so the lot is conforming. The lot is 100 feet wide, so a front facing garage door is a nonconformity. It is an existing nonconformity, which we are proposing to exacerbate by moving it forward by 6.3 feet. However, that would only extend the garage to eight feet in front of the front facade. If we were to go beyond that, we would require another variance. So we're stopping it at the eight foot in front of the main facade dimension. The house is located all the way on the right side of the property. So although the lot is conforming in both square footage and width, the location of the house on the property is such that it's over the right side setback line, which should be 15 feet, and their right side setback line is only 10 feet. So we actually have three existing nonconformities. We have front facing garage doors, we have a 10-foot side yard setback, and we also, because of the width of the house, have a nonconforming combined side yard, which is supposed to be 35%, and we are at, we are at 27.75. So we have three existing nonconformities, which our proposal exacerbates. Because of the location of the house on the property, we cannot rotate the garage doors and access them from the right side, because there's not enough room. We can't extend the garage further back into the house, because there's a small mudroom behind the house, and then we're on the back wall of the house, which sits on the rear yard setback line. And there's also a previously approved cupboard deck behind that portion of the house, which the Raskins have received a resolution for, I think back in 2018 or 19. So I'd like to, I do want to mention one, one thing that I noticed on Krista's notes. Krista did indicate that we have the front facing garage doors, which require the variance. She indicated the right side setback, she indicated the combined side setbacks, but she also indicated that there was a rear yard setback nonconformity, which I'm not sure if that's a typo or just a misunderstanding. We actually are conforming in rear yard. If you look at your sheet V1, which has Andrew Clark's survey on it, it indicates that the back of the house is 45 feet, 45.5 feet from the rear property line, and the setback is 45, and we are maintaining that wall. So I believe that that might be a miscommunication or a misunderstanding, just wanted to point that out. We are also requesting.
Well, let's stop for a second.
Okay.
Let's think about that. In my lifetime, Krista's never been wrong.
I said to Jill, Krista never makes a mistake. I said that tonight. I did. Because I used to, I did used to work in Summit many years ago, and I do know Krista. So, but I looked at Andrew Clark's survey, and his says 45.5. It is current, and I have a copy of it.
Our engineers took a look at it. Put you guys on the spot.
This is odd.
It's on my sheet, V1, in your package.
When you measure a setback in your ordinance, is it, is it to any overhangs or is it to foundation?
I would always say it's to the overhang. It's always been my view in all the towns I worked in. And Andy Clark is somebody who's really competent and knows Summit.
Trying to think if that was.
Right, though, though, as you point out, in, over the back stairs, he does note an overhang, and it looks as though it jets out from the building wall.
So maybe he missed it, Krista caught it? Is that enough to make the difference for, you know? The overhang?
It could be, that could be the difference, if that's, if that's what we're looking at.
Is the overhang new or is the overhang existing?
We would like to line up the new bedroom above with the existing wall. So if there is an overhang there now, we would be maintaining that same depth, because we want the gutter and the roof to line up exactly. And then I also just wanted to make, I have some pictures here that I put together, so you know, we can label this exhibit, but I took a picture of that area just in case we have this discussion.
Let's label it first, just so it's on the record. So this would be A1.
Label it A1?
Yeah, if we can. And then just with regard to the photos, when were they taken?
The photos were taken, I think, in February. I took the pictures, it was in the winter when I measured, it's February. And I put together the 3D views from my computer model, this was.
And the photos, as well as the computer renderings, fairly represents either the existing condition or in some instances, the proposed future condition.
Yes, and I'll walk you through this whole thing. Since we're talking about the back now, I'll start with that. I included this to show that the portion of the house up on the second floor that we'd like to add is this little section right here. It's a new bedroom above the existing garage, and it's actually tucked behind the cupboard deck, which they had previously been approved for in a previous variance. So, and if Krista is correct, and again, I've never seen her not be correct, but I'm going with Mr. Clark's survey, we're off by six inches. We would end up pushing the wall in six inches, which in my professional opinion, would be considered a downside.
Well, needing a variance isn't the same thing as having to move anything, right? So if you need a variance, then the board will consider it, right?
Then if we need a variance, then I'd like for you to consider that.
Anything else you'd like to point out from the board? I know you probably worked hard on those renderings over the weekend, so.
Okay. So while I'm on this, this is what the front of the house looks like now. Obviously, this is the area we're talking about, the front facing garage doors. This is what we're proposing. We're proposing to extend the garage by six foot three, which again, would be eight feet from the front of the house. We're proposing to add a new primary suite above the garage, and we were careful to bring that room in so that it sits on the side yard setback line, so that we would not be asking for any variances on the second floor, unless Krista's right about the back.
Krista's right.
Okay, so then we, okay, so then we're applying, we're asking for that. These three dormers are new, they're just overlay dormers, we're not adding to the FAR in those bedrooms, just overlay inaccessible for aesthetic purposes. The construction official did recommend or did suggest or did want verification that they would have copper roofs, which they will, to match the copper on the roofs below. That's it for the second floor. This is what this would look like from the side, you'd have a little balcony. Obviously, this bedroom would be set back, sitting on that 10-foot side yard line. And then I did also want to indicate, I didn't know this at the time, but Krista did point out that the Raskins have a basketball net here. I've spoken to them about this. If the board, if they can remove it, I don't think, what they really want is the garage. If they have to remove the court, I think that you're both okay with that, but you can answer that question. Relocate it?
I was the bad guy in the last case? It seems to me in Summit that we didn't want basketball seen from the front yard forever. Not all of that's changed. Like if you're in a different town, if you're in Woodbridge, it's fine, but here in Summit, so I don't know how the board feels about that, but in the past, the board has always said no, they're being able to see the basketball court.
Is that objectionable?
If I were the attorney advising you, I'd probably move it to the back or something or.
Or remove it entirely. That's acceptable?
Not to my 10-year-old, but.
Okay. There have been a number of cases here.
There's many kids in Summit that hate me because they're sweet setters from out there, you know?
That's true.
He'll be driving soon, he needs to move his car in the garage, so let's focus on this, focus on the big picture here.
Okay, thank you.
That will be part of this agreement here. So these are the pictures, and then just taking a quick look at the existing and the proposed floor plans, you can see on your sheet V2.
I mean, I would just take it down, you build the garage, you just never put it back up, you won't even know.
Smart kid.
The most important floor to look at, obviously, is the first floor. See, we have an undersized garage. Based on Krista's notes, the requirement for the interior dimension is 20 feet. Ours is 18, but there's actually also an overhang in the garage, and they cannot fit their cars in there. We have a stair on the right side. This hatch marked is typically graphic representation of the size of their tri- This hatch marked is, it's a geographic representation of the size of their truck. So they absolutely cannot fit in there. And then the proposed plans on sheet B3, I've just highlighted in yellow a little bit here that we're hoping that we get approval for. That will enable them to fit two cars in there. We're trying to ask for enough for them to get their cars in there, but nothing too excessive. We don't want to go beyond that 80% dimension. And then by pushing this further a little bit here, they'll, they'll be able to actually give themselves a slightly larger mudroom and get the powder room out of the middle of the house. Because when you walk down the hall towards the kitchen, you're in a narrow hallway, and the first thing you see is the bathroom. And if the kids leave the door open, which they always do, the first thing you see is the toilet when you walk into the house. So the goal would be just get the cars in the garage, get rid of the basketball court, give them a little bit more breathing room in the back. And then I would just like to quickly, in terms of the zoning, I went through all of Krista's notes, and I went through all of the notes from the engineers. And basically, the lot is 15,000 square foot lot. It's 100 feet wide. We are well conforming with the front yard setback. The rear yard setback, we discussed, is a nonconformity. Right side is a nonconformity, which we're exacerbating. Overall, side yard is an existing nonconformity, which we're exacerbating. But the three bulk numbers, which I think are very important, are lot coverage, we are not changing. So if we can pull that garage forward, it will be sitting on top of existing impervious coverage. We are not making the driveway any wider. I know that was one of the questions of both Krista and the engineers. The driveway would actually become, we would have less impervious coverage of driveway. It would be replaced with house. Building coverage, we would be going from 15.5% to 16.72%, which is an addition of 176 square feet. And the allowable building coverage is 18%, so we're still well under with building coverage. There's no change to the building height. There's no change to the story height. And then our floor area ratio would be 25%, which is conforming. So the, again, the three of the four variances that we'd be requesting are, it's actually four of four, if that back is nonconforming. All four are existing nonconformities that would be exacerbated by this request. We went through the engineers. At the moment, on the call year report number nine, the engineer did state that at the moment, we have not proposed any stormwater management at the, at the moment. The engineer at the moment takes no exception to that. The Raskins do have a dry well in the back. If this is permitted, the first thing that we would do is, I'm happy to reach out to Murphy and Hollows if that's the engineer you prefer to work with. I do a lot of work with Jim Watson from EKA Associates.
We'll never tell you the news.
Okay. But we would have an engineer put together a grading plan, a stormwater management system. No-
Could you, let's, let's hold on that first.
Okay.
Let's hear what the concerns of the neighbor are first.
Okay.
Is that okay, the board?
I just want to hear, Ms. McHann wants to draw any further attention before we hear from the engineers.
No, I, I think you've addressed, addressed our concerns of this plan.
And then we would just ask, as a condition of the application, that you accept the engineer's letter, which is just a standard condition. Is that, that's acceptable?
Except-
Okay. All right. So let's hear from some neighbors then. Ms. McCann, if you'd like to come forward.
Hello.
State your name and your address.
Deb McCann for Colt Road Summit.
And if you're going to comment, I need to put you under oath.
Okay.
So you're going to probably comment, so let's just raise your hand.
Okay.
You swear a firm testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth? Not the good truth?
I do.
All right. Say your full name for the record.
Deborah McCann.
Spell your last name.
M-C-C-A-N-N.
Thank you very much. Please proceed.
So we live behind the Raskins. And we are good neighbors. We want them to be able to get this done. You know, I think it looks beautiful. We, we also lived in a house once where you couldn't fit the cars in the garage, which was always kind of odd, that they build the garages that you can't fit cars in. So we're all for the, the addition. We just are concerned about water. So we live on Colt Road, and it's a slope. So Manor Hill Road comes here, then there's Pine Grove. Their driveway goes down, and then we live behind them. So that's our concern.
All right. Let me tell you what, what I see.
Okay.
Having done this for 30 years.
Okay.
Is that they're not increasing the size of the building footprint.
Okay.
When you increase the size of the built footprint, you're blocking the water from getting back into the surface. So just from the look of it, there'll be no change to the existing condition based on what they're proposing, because they're not expanding anything. They're not expanding the driveway, they're not expanding the building. And they have a dry well in the rear of their home, which is probably absorbing some of the water that's heading in your direction. Whether, you know, whatever. And the other important rule, land use, is that post-development runoff, after we build whatever we're building, cannot exceed pre-development runoff.
Okay.
And in this particular case, I see, and I'm not the expert, our engineer will have to confirm it.
Yep.
But I don't see any reason why there would be any increase in runoff on a building that's not being expanded.
Okay. I guess the question is that there's drains in their driveway now, and so we want to make sure there'll be, you know, drain, new drains and new, you know, whatever's impacted by the construction to ensure that that's replaced.
So maybe just to elaborate on what you were saying, are there plans to propose or review, I should say, the stormwater management conditions?
Right. So my understanding from the engineer's report was that if we did receive approval tonight, that we can then engage a civil engineer to put together a stormwater management system for the Raskins.
How would that sound, Dennis, within a resolution?
Yeah, the applicant is to submit a stormwater management plan. But I didn't, I didn't want you to go too far to do a stormwater management plan if there isn't any possible increase in drainage. But that's a great point, that you don't, one of the things that we do sometimes mess up on is, you've got a drainage system. It's been there for 10 years. It gets crap in it, and it doesn't function as well. So we should at least make sure that what we add out there is functional. So by doing the stormwater management plan, the goal is to check all the systems and make sure there any, everything's functioning properly to the, to the rear of the property.
That's exactly what I would like to do.
I don't think crap is a professional engineering term, but Ms. McHann, did what he's saying makes sense?
I don't think he knows what that means, so I think that's-
Thank you.
Yeah, because I think the drains now, my understanding from them is it goes out to Colt Road, the drain, which I'm not quite sure how, because I live in the house behind it. So I'm not sure I even quite understand how it works now.
So that, that would be part of a stormwater management plan to understand-
To understand where that water goes.
And then Chris, if Ms. McCann or another neighbor would want to access the stormwater management plan, could they call you or your office?
It would be submitted as a grading permit, in terms of, are they public records? Yeah, I mean, certain things you can't see, like architectural floor plans and stuff for other homes.
Yep, that's fine.
But I think the, the grading plan is something that would be reviewable.
Okay. Yeah, because we did a large addition a few years ago. We dug up our whole house, and I, I didn't see pipes or, so I'm not, so that would be helpful for me to understand how that works, so. Okay.
The board would look favorably if you would engage your neighbors on these issues, just to share and plan for coffee.
Yeah.
And you guys can look at stormwater management plans.
That would be great. Thank you. Exactly.
You know, I want you to know, I find that a topic very draining.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCann.
I want to weigh in.
Would you care to comment as well or ask a question?
I mean, I'm happy to go on, but I don't know that I have anything to add other than what Deb has said, because, you know, I would-
Would you like to, would you like to testify? Yeah. You're welcome to. You came out tonight.
You're a catty corner neighbor.
You have to raise your right hand. You swear a firm testimony or fact to give the board is the truth, the whole truth, and not the best truth?
I do.
Say your full name for records by last.
Christine Murray, M-U-R-R-A-Y. And I live at 2 Colt Road, which is catty corner behind them. So it was just the same issue. You know, there, there are, I guess, existing drains in their driveway. They're expanding their garage just to make sure the drains get moved and that the water gets funneled off appropriately. So I don't think I have anything to add.
Okay. Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you.
All right. So we have, we have a condition to that effect, which is great. Is there any further comment you'd like to-
I just wanted to say one thing.
Please, yes.
What, as you said, Mr. Galvin, is that, Mr. Galvin, if the engineers can verify that the existing system can be-
What I wrote is, the applicant will submit an updated stormwater management plan and ensure that all drainage in the rear of the property is functioning adequately.
Perfect.
That's what we really need. We need to make, we need to double, you know, you're not, you're, again, you're not increasing the stormwater runoff.
Right.
So what we're talking about, we're talking about, are the existing systems operating properly? When you extend the bill, where were the, I don't know where the drains were, did you, when you, in the, in the driveway. So let them, let the engineers, let the pros take a look at that and see if it works.
Great. Perfect.
Ms. McCann?
Just to clarify, when you're saying they're not expanding their lot coverage, I mean, they are moving the two, the two-car garage six feet forward, right?
No, but the lot coverage, yes, they are, but the, there's driveway there now. So when the rain comes down, it's the driveway.
I see what you're saying.
When it comes down-
The impervious doesn't change.
The impervious, okay.
After they build it, it hits the building. It's real, from, you know, if you got a helicopter and we went up in the sky, we looked down, that same cookie cutter into the lot would be the same.
I just wanted to make sure I understood. Thank you.
We want to make sure that if you have a dry well on your property, that the water is, goes to that dry well, and it basically acts as a sewage bed. It maintains the water on your property, so you don't have any runoff to your neighbors.
All good?
I think so.
Okay. Excellent. All right. Any further testimony you'd like to provide?
Not for me.
Wonderful. And then you're the last professional, which is great. I don't believe there's any other member of the interested public. Thank you both for coming to testify this evening. Anything, Ms. Raskin, that you say in conclusion for the application?
Thank you so much for your time and your consideration on our variances, requests.
Strong points. Mr. Galvin, to remind us of the conditions?
Yes. The applicant agreed to remove the basketball hoop from its current location and not blame the board attorney. The applicant will submit an updated stormwater management plan and ensure that all drainage in the rear of the property is functioning adequately.
Why can't we just have them keep the basketball court?
Sorry, sorry. And the, except for the engineer's letter?
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry.
Well, you can. And, and what I was trying to tell you before is, you know, what does Summit want? In the past, we haven't, in the past, it's been a big deal about allowing basketball courts.
Well, there's one neighbor that, there was one neighbor that had an issue, so that's what happened. But Krista said there, doesn't seem to be any of where neighborhood concerns.
I think another way to look at this is-
Just because I, when I, even when Andy does in the future, we're just throwing out the conditions we collected during the hearing. You certainly don't have to agree with any of the conditions that I put in. And I'm not arguing, I'm a little kid guy, so I'm not arguing against basketball hoops. I just, I also don't want you to get hung out a boy and have you approve something because you want to be nice, and then find out that you get pushed back from people in other places because other neighborhoods are like, well, why can't we have basketball? We have, over 20 years, we turned down a lot of people who had basketball hoops in the front yard.
I think, I think another way to look at it too, Liz, is in an application where maybe there isn't a screaming positive criteria to approve the application, addressing a non, existing nonconformity, I would weigh as a positive into it as well. So it's a component to it. And Dennis is the bad guy. When they're out there dribbling their ball alone with nothing to shoot it into.
It's, one of the arguments I also heard in Summit, come to time, and I saw it a little bit, I didn't pay attention to it, was that this is inactive use on the side of the house. So now if you're a neighbor, you know, I don't know, there's nobody complaining, but, and then, whatever it is, perfectly for you guys, but I had a basketball hoop behind my house in Jackson, and it was miserable, okay? So.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Galvin. Who'd like to begin the deliberations then?
Well, see, I would have kept a basketball court.
Go ahead. Just, if you guys want-
I have to tell you, we've had a number of these, and I think we've kept them in the last few years.
Then do it.
But again, that's up to the-
Can I, can I request a variance to keep it?
Yeah. Yeah, you can. Yeah.
Yes, the board, listen, Krista pointed it out. I'm just trying to protect the board from, I would, I don't want to use the word political, but criticism from, it's due changing what's been kind of an important policy in the, in the town. Now, this isn't, this isn't in the front yard, this is in the side yard. And there's other good reasons why the board should be concerned about activities in the side yard. And again, we don't have, you can grant a variance.
This isn't a driveway in the front yard.
Can we explore just for one more moment, since it's come up so prominently? Just a little bit of the history, could you just share with us some of the reasons? I mean, I can imagine a ball rolling into the street and that being dangerous.
I'm pretty sure that there is a prohibition on basketball courts in the front yard.
Okay. Is that, okay.
I think that's-
Can you, can you share a couple of the reasons that people-
I can't find it, but I can't find it off the top of my head.
Okay.
Okay? And, and there's also something about having active space outdoors near, near a neighbor.
Sure. I understand.
And I agree, even if those were, even if those are variance conditions, you can grant a variance, board, I can. There's got to be someplace, if you're a house that's on a lake, on a neighborhood where nobody's there, what's the problem? And there's nobody complaining. In fact, the neighbors are saying, go ahead and do it. So my job is to caution you. So go ahead and do it. And then if you get any criticism, then you'll say, okay, Dennis, we're sorry.
Well, I, I actually have a question for the applicant on this, because the neighbors on, next to the basketball hoop, the branch flowers are fairly new. Have you had a conversation with them about this?
The project or the basketball hoop?
The basketball hoop.
Oh, yeah. Well, I mean, we've been very friendly with them since they've moved in, and their children have played on it. I don't know if I'm allowed to say that.
Yes, absolutely. That's very relevant, yeah.
But yes, they're lovely people, and we have discussed the project.
Just to return to some history, the past concern, just as a generic statement, was that this was an act, and I'm thinking of other cases where this had come up, and in one case in particular, where this was the only subject that was hotly debated. I put it deep into the de-recesses of my memory, but here we are again. Was the concern about the active use, so the noise, and there was concern about, on a general sense, encroachment upon the neighboring property. And this was, as you would imagine, kind of an ornery old man next to a young family that didn't-
Right.
Sorry, I didn't point in your direction. And some concern to that effect.
Okay. Okay.
And it was a much busier street as well.
Yeah, that's true. That is a safety concern as well, which, I mean, we can, your testimony now, I mean, it just-
Well, in a case where the affected neighbors are in fact using the basketball hoop along with the family-
Right.
Yeah, but that's where, though, you get into a place where those conditions may not exist.
They're going to move. I know. And somebody, the neighbors move.
Basketball hoops are...
And the cranky old neighbor moves in.
Yeah, it's a whole rabbit hole here, this, unfortunately. Not because we aren't fans of basketball, but it's what it is. Unless anyone has a burning desire to approve a basketball hoop tonight, let's maybe just keep it to what the application is before us, is that okay?
And this is not a permanent installation, it's a temporary... I don't see a problem with that. Basketball is not a permanent structure, so...
I mean, I always take notes in advance, and I actually listed five variances, I included it, I just assumed. I thought we would go there, that was what I assumed we'd conclude, but...
Sorry.
It's okay. Do we want to hear testimony then as to the location, utility of the basketball hoop, when it was installed, how construction may affect it?
Well...
I'm happy to, we've got time, Dennis was moving us...
I know, I think it's, I think more realistically, it would come down for the project, but they have the variance, should they wish at some point to put it back up. I wouldn't object personally, but, Mr. Chairman.
No, and it's just, we would have to approve the variance.
The variance for the seven-feet side yard setback, yeah.
It's a nonconforming location.
I know, I understand, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's seven feet when it needs to be 15, so it's not small, I understand.
But then it's an issue, right? It's a variance that runs with the land, so if they don't put it up, and then it's there for your neighbors if you ever sell the house, you shouldn't touch it for that reason, I feel, right? This is my opinion, man, basketball...
Seriously, I told you guys, don't go down there, so. Chris remembers that case, yeah. All right, all right, let's leave...
Good, I rest.
Let's leave it alone, all right.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yes, please.
If they remove it now, can they apply in the future to put it back?
Yes, absolutely, yes, we're not ruling on it, we're just asking them to remove it, so we don't want to grant them the variance.
Okay.
As part of this application, that's correct. But you're welcome to come back for a specific and dedicated conversation on the basketball hoop.
Or perhaps find a conforming location on the property to put it?
That's right.
And get a permit from the construction office.
That's right.
Okay. Don't know that there is one. And I'm getting a shaking of the head in the back, but that is a prospect.
So we have conditions noted, variances under consideration. Who'd like to begin then deliberations? Nobody jumped that. Scott, you've been quiet all night. Come on, help me out.
I think this is an entirely reasonable application. You know, the trade-off to make the house more usable is taking away from the driveway. How can you be against that? So I'm in favor of this application.
Excellent. Care to elaborate on Scott's comments?
I would specifically call out the drainage review and improvement, which is important to that neighborhood and comes up all the time. Every application would get anywhere around there. So for that reason, and the fact that what they're asking for isn't that difficult, I'm going to support this one.
You guys are at the bottom of a hill, right? So it would behoove you to... You're at the bottom, all right, you're down the hill, they're at the bottom of the hill. Right, so Pine Grove is higher than the bottom of your driveway, where it will be. So it would behoove you to put in drainage there. Enough set, there we go. Problem solved.
Also, I view this as a safety issue, being able to use your garage to park your cars is really important, especially in Summit. I think, you know, you can't fit your cars in there now. Parking in the driveway is less than ideal for numerous reasons. And your street, it's not a super quiet street, parking on the street is not great. And this will also allow you room for guests, too, and it's also just improving just overall safety. And then the side yards, the side rear and combined side yard percentage, all pre-existing, as you stated. So, you know, I support this very much. And I kind of would have gone with the basketball hoop, too, but I... I'm sorry, I'm leaving it alone!
Well, I was going to say, and this is a part of town where the houses tend to be set fairly far back on the lots. So flirting with the rear yard setback isn't unheard of. And of course, in this case, you're sort of shoved onto one side of the lot, so you're dealing with, we don't want to call them hardships necessarily, but you're kind of stuck with what you're stuck, you've got what you've got unless you want to tear the house down and rebuild it. So given how reasonable what you're trying to do is, I can support this application.
Excellent. Anyone care to anything further? I think for all those reasons, I too can support it. And thank you, Ms. Lazar, for the good discussion of the alternatives you could have sought that would have only exacerbated other setbacks and what have you. So you made the best of, I wouldn't say a bad situation, but the best of the situation you have on your hands. And we appreciate, in a sense, the restraint that you took to put forward something that isn't usable, is safe, was aesthetically desirable. Thank you for the concern you've shown over HPC's comments about materials. That's certainly well received, so I too could support the application. Do we have a motion to approve the application with conditions as noted? So moved. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, Vice Chairman Steiner.
Yes.
Ms. Newell?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Leukets?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
Dr. Levine?
Yes.
And Chairman Spur?
Yes.
All right, motion carried.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, we have a little bit of housekeeping, some resolutions for memorialization, and minutes for approval.
Correct, same eligible voting members for all the resolutions, so I'll just list them once. Eligible voting members are Vice Chairman Steiner, Ms. Newell, Mr. Malley, Mr. Leukets, Dr. Levine, and Mr. Gonzalez. Our first resolution is 21 Hughes Place, the denial, which is application ZB-22-2131. Would somebody like to make a motion? And a second. All right. Vice Chairman Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Newell?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Leukets?
Yes.
Dr. Levine?
Yes.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
All right, next is 111 Witridge Road, application ZB-22-2136. Same eligible members. Vice Chairman Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Newell?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Leukets?
Yes.
Dr. Levine?
Yes.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
All right, next is 25 Baltis Row Place, application ZB-22-2139. Need a motion for that?
So moved.
All right, Vice Chair Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Newell?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Leukets?
Yes.
Dr. Levine?
Yes.
And Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
And we have 41 Oakley Avenue, application ZB-22-2133. Need a motion for that?
Second.
Vice Chairman Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Newell?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Leukets?
Yes.
Dr. Levine?
Yes.
And Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
And we have our resolution of extension for 3 Edison Drive. Need a motion for that as well.
Same eligible voting members?
This one actually will be the first set of members tonight, because we'll do it that way.
Do we have a motion about resolution of extension? So moved. Second?
Second.
All right, it's Vice Chair Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Newell?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Leukets?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
Dr. Levine?
Yes.
And Chairman Spur?
Yes.
And we've got two sets of minutes. First is July 6, 2022. Do we have a motion for that?
Moved.
Can you really? All right.
Go ahead, keep going.
Who's got the second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See you, none. And now we have July 18. Somebody like to move those? And a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See you, none.
Do they know who you are?
No.
Why don't you stand up for a second? Here's your new secretary, this is the new Chris.
Oh, wow.
She's going to have to learn how to pronounce your names, and I want you to be kind to her if she messes them up a little bit, okay?
Welcome, Stephanie.
That's the hardest part.
Welcome, welcome.